Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the South Hegan Cooperative School Board meeting. Today is Thursday, April thirteenth, and I've got six oh one. So because this is the first meeting of the two thousand twenty-three, twenty-four iteration of the South Hegan Cooperative School Board, I am honored and privileged, and I get to, as the interim superintendent, I get to open the meeting until the chair is selected, and then I very gleefully and happily hand off the chair. But it is an honor and privilege, and I thank you all for your service and welcome. The Sunny has new, and congratulations to Christine and Stephanie. So I'd like to begin by asking for nominations for the Chair of the South Hegan Cooperative School Board. Thank you. We have enough in a second. Any discussion? And Stephanie, are you willing to accept the appointment if so elected? Turn your mic on. All those in, uh, take it to vote. All those in favor? Opposed? Wonderful. It passes. And Stephanie, thank you. Congratulations, and I appreciate your service. And happily turn over the the gavel slash microphone to you.
Alright.
In the recording, did my job.
Alright. Great. Thank you very much, Mr. Chamberlain. So we will look at the, uh, consider the other officers. So the next one we'll talk about is Vice Chair of the School Board. Do I have any nominations? Peters has been nominated. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
He's been second. And any other nominations? Any discussion? Alright, let's vote. Those in favor of Christine Peters as Vice Chair, so he can cooperate with the School Board? Any opposed? None? Christine, congratulations. You are Vice Chair. Thank you very much. And Secretary? Do I have any nominations for Secretary?
Nominated Anna Gulei Zimmerman.
Anna is a nomination. Do we have a second?
I'll take it.
So we got a second. Any other nominations? None? Any discussion? Okay, let's take a vote. Uh, any of those in favor of Anna Gulei Zimmerman as Secretary for South Hegan Cooperative School Board? Any opposed? Any abstain? Did you vote for yourself? Um, congratulations, Anna. You are now Secretary. Okay, so the next thing, instead of going on with the rest of the committees, which we'll come back to, what I'd like to do is turn it over to have the Hype presentation, so we're, we can get everybody home as soon as we can. So Chris, do you have you, your students?
Oh, sure.
Come on up. Um, if you want to press the button in front, so that turns to, the light turns to green, and Mr. Chamberlain will
Working, yeah.
will pull it up.
You're right. It's a little higher. There you go.
And you'll need to speak into those. You might want to hold the microphone, so people can hear you on Zoom. Otherwise, it's a distance.
Is that like a good place to start? How'd it do so far?
Yeah.
So you just let me know when you want to change the slide, and I'll be happily doing it for you.
Great.
Yeah.
Thanks.
So hi, guys. My name's Ryan.
I'm Lily.
And then here we have Olivia with us. She's a freshman. She'll answer some questions for you guys later in the presentation. Next slide.
Um, so today, we're here to talk a little bit about the Ethics Forum. So it's made, um, it's a senior group, extracurricular volunteer group, and so our focus mainly is community outreach to other schools. So this year, we did a lot of work, like communicating with other schools and showing them how we run our program, and seeing how they could set up something similar, but kind of their own style, because each school is different. And then third, this year, we did a lot of networking, so we'll get into that later. Um, this is our year at a glance. So we had a pretty busy year. This isn't even everything that we did, but this is kind of just like the big things. As you can see, a lot of things overlapped, took a lot of collaboration. We had a group of about thirty-five to forty kids this year, all learning together.
So one of the first things that we did was Claus for a Cause, and I don't know if you guys are familiar, but Hope for Gus used to be the main fundraising event, and it was this past summer when Steve Javair came and approached our group and wanted to move away from that foundation. And the summer, we spent all the time creating this new foundation called Claus for a Cause. And as a group, we decided to raise the money for N sixty-eight Hours of Hunger and Share. Um, it was an extremely successful event. You can go to the next slide. Uh, we have the shirts. So we like, it was all done by members of, in the Ethics Group, created the logo, um, created the new Claus for a Cause, and it took a lot of effort from us in the group and then all the faculty at South Hegan as well.
Um, so these are a few pictures of just how the night went. We dress up the mascot every year with our T-shirts. Uh, everything is student-run, so if you guys made it to the event, there were a lot of people there. Um, there are a lot of concession stands lining the entrance to the turf field. Uh, we tried to plan it, so it's a really big game, drawing people. So this year was Milford versus South Hegan. So it was a big game. We knew that we were able to get both towns included and a lot of kids out. So we also had a homecoming dance as well, Saturday afternoon.
Yeah, to add on to that, unlike in previous years, uh, the homecoming was the first week coming back from school. So it was kind of like a kickoff to like the year. It was really exciting. Um, it had an amazing turnout compared to previous years, especially given the fact that we had to start from basically nothing. But, I mean, if anyone, if any of you guys were there, we greatly appreciated it, so. Just more, um, pictures. Uh, as you can see, like, there's just an overall, like, such a, they had such an over, uh, we had just had great support from the community, basically.
Um, so next up is Operation Pumpkin. So we went from planning Claus for a Cause for about like four months to Operation Pumpkin. So we had about from end of September to late October to plan this. So October thirty-first, we went off to Mount Vernon Village School, and we performed a play for them. This is a yearly tradition. And we spent the day with them, eating lunch with them, and just hanging out in their classrooms. Um, we do the pumpkin, like, kind of like giveaway every single year, where we paint pumpkins for like a day and a half leading up to the event, and we haul over like a couple hundred pumpkins in a trailer that are all painted in different ways and themes. So that's our main cast of the play right there. Uh, this year's theme is Scooby-Doo.
Yeah, and Operation Pumpkin was also just a great way to like connect with like a younger audience. Uh, like the seniors, we just kind of like followed and mirrored the kids for the entire day, like, kind of, like, where they're like pack, I guess, but it was overall just like such a fun experience to like be with them and to share that time.
So May Conferences was another thing that our group engaged in. So this kind of happened in a couple ways. We attended a lot of conferences with the other schools hosted. So Kirsarge is getting their own group going called Swoko, and their, uh, their conference was mainly towards leadership. So that picture all the way on the left, I believe, is the Kirsarge, like, group that went together. And, um, we also had a cooperation with SNU this year for the first time ever. So as high school students and college students, we came together to create a conference on civics. So this year's question was, what does it mean to be a good person? A unique thing about that conference was we had a panel of people to answer questions, kind of like, they were like professionals in their field of like leadership. So we had a Tusk professor. We had someone, Sam Fuller, that has his own foundation, non-focal organization out of Boston, South Africa. We had Dea Morano, who works a lot in youth and adult leadership. And, um, we found that combining the high school and colleges, college kids really forged like new connections. And lastly, Safe Schools was among one of our other conferences that we participated in as well. Uh, consultations. So as you said before, we've been working with a variety of other schools, um, this year. Because Hype is getting so large, we needed to bring in more people to help facilitate the group discussions. So a couple of schools came through for us, Spalding, Pembroke, among some of them. Convale, we hosted an event with, um. So like, I don't know if anyone's familiar with Kevin Potter, but he's the new athletic director there. And so he's starting to get a leadership group going there, and so we cooperated with them to do a basketball game. Hanover, we hosted, just to give them a tour of South Hegan, show them what Ethics really did.
Yeah, so like what Lily said, um, Convale kind of approached us with this new idea of bringing a student leadership group together at Convale. So as a group, like, it was Lily, me, and two other people, and we really extended like an open arm to help them. So we gave them the Claus for a Cause logo to really like help booster, um, their own event. And we hope to continue, or we hope that they continue to make their own event and like kind of bring together their community like what we have here, because, um, you know, the school district is kind of different. It's like a new thing, so we wanted to help them establish that new like student voice in their community. So I don't know if you guys want to play the video. This is all we had. But we had a cat fight in the middle of the, of the, in between the games. The basketball games were so much fun.
Really?
Yeah. Yes, it was really fun, like really like challenging games, but it was just nice to have the two communities come together. There is kind of like that rivalry. Um, but I mean, we raised so much money. It was just such a good time. And then we kind of, as, as we, as Convale hosted the event, we also hosted our own dance, winter dance at South Hegan. To kind of celebrate the win, the one win compared to the both games, but, uh, to kind of make sure like the community can go and support other communities, but then also make sure that like we had the time for ourselves to just come and dance and have fun. So then our last big event of the year was Hype, and we hosted around eight hundred fifty students in seventeen schools. It's held at UNH at the Hamla Rec Center. And Hype kind of started as a senior project here at South Hegan around like ten years ago. And it was led, well, it was originally around like a small group of students just coming together and having an ethical discussion. And over the years, it has gotten way bigger. And like what Lily has been discussing, our outreach continues to new schools every year. So here are some pictures. Our EQ this year was how does individual agency and self-determination sustain a fulfilling student life? So what Lily went over too is that we had a mini-conference in November, which brought together about like three, four, five schools. And with those schools, we came up with this EQ, like cooperatively and together. And we really wanted to express in this question is just like how students can have more, um, like leadership roles in their community. And again, kind of sharing that idea of how can we have an ethical discussion to promote new schools to do the same and have student voice in their, um, like, school boards and their community, and just kind of have like this nice, like holistic cooperation between everyone. These were the shirts this year. I'm wearing one. Um, but again, the shirt color, uh, and everything is chosen by students. On the back, we have all of the sponsors for the event. I think we have like eleven sponsors maybe, but a lot of, uh, support from colleges, um, community colleges, and then a lot of new organizations that we previously haven't worked with yet. But it was just really nice to, like, continue to get that support in order to make this event happen, because we wouldn't have done it without, you know, like the monetary stuff and just like the, the community or the, like, the space to host such a large event.
Um, so these are a few pictures of just how the event went. So this year, we did something pretty unique, uh, where we had student testimonials run. So Ryan and I were a part of that. We had five students speak on personal experience and address the questions through their own perspective, their own lens. And I think that was really productive and like jump-starting the conversation for the day. Along with that, we had Maggie Hassan as a guest speaker. She recorded a video for us about the importance of student voice and how we can continue kind of that trend in our communities. Um, so the format of Hype is one big opening assembly at the beginning around like nine thirty or something like that when people arrive. And then you break off into small discussion groups. We try to keep the group small, like ten, twelve people, just so everyone has a chance to participate throughout the day and just like really get to know each other too. So these are pictures of our small groups. They stay in these groups for about two hours, and then we head to the UNH dining hall and we all.
Yeah, and then to add on to that, all the facilitators are from mostly South Hegan and, um, other students from different schools. So it's just, it's just kind of a nice experience to have voices from only students and kind of have the ethical discussion and share each other's opinions on so many different topics, uh, especially one that relates to everyone who was there.
So this is our big picture. Um, but a lot of work went into this across like the entire school. We had a lot of juniors, sophomores, even a couple of freshmen helping out by facilitating the conversations that day, helping with setup, things like that. And I'm going to pass it off to Olivia to share her personal experience.
So my team, I'm Olivia, and I'm a freshman here at South Hegan. Um, and I was one of the hundred and sixty-five freshmen who attended the Hype Conference. So I'm going to share a little bit about my experience, but also some of the feedback from the hundred and thirty-one students that responded to the survey and how, um, asked themselves how they felt it went. Um, so like I said earlier, the question was about how, um, was how does individual agency and self-determination fulfill, um, sustain a fulfilling student life? And, um, I felt that the question was like a bit confusing at first, like it's very wordy and like long, it's like a lot of complicated stuff, but with like all the facilitators there, um, and like especially having like one to two per group, it made it a lot easier to understand, because if you were having like a hard time, like the facilitators already knew what they were doing and like how to say, um, how to explain it better. And, um, in my conversation, we talked about how students had enjoyed their education more um, when they had power in like certain aspects. Um, like, kind of, like choosing electives is like one that came up a lot. Um, I feel like this question really helps us recognize, um, how our school helps to make sure that every person, um, really has an opportunity, um, to like their own individual agency and like each, meaning like each student has the resources and power to show like their true potential and like what they can do. Um, I feel like this conference could really benefit future freshmen, um, because it teaches them to be like more thoughtful, especially in conversations with groups of people that they like haven't been with before. It's definitely something that helps people just generally in life is getting to work with people you don't really know. Um, but also it helps you with like your own like self-determination and like making you decide like what do I want my student, like, goal to be and like how do I want to fulfill myself as a student or like feel fulfilled? Um, so some like the things that like I got from the survey, um, is that eighty-one point two percent of the freshmen said yes or yes definitely when they asked if the Hype Conference discussions were successful. Because I feel like, um, people were worried that it like wouldn't go well, but I feel like it definitely went well. Um, many of the students that were in the survey and that I like talked to in my everyday life mentioned how it was just nice to collaborate with students from like other schools, because you don't really get to see what experiences are like for like other people. But when you talk with them, you really get to see what their lives are like. Um, and then a lot of people said that their favorite part was the food. Um, but a lot of students also said that, um, the discussion was like went really well. And yeah, it was just cool for them to get to know the other people. I felt that the groups were a pretty reasonable size, between like ten to twelve people. Um, and like the facilitators, again, were like pretty helpful. And it was like a little bit nerve-wracking at first, but like with the facilitators kind of like warming you up and like giving you like easier questions, like what's your name, what's your favorite color? Stuff like that made it a lot easier to like share with other people. So, um, in conclusion, I'd like to share, I'm still going, two statistics with you. Um, when asked, do you think the Hype Conference was worth our time? Eighty point one percent of the freshmen said yes or yes definitely. And the other question was, when asked, would you consider being a discussion facilitator at Hype next year or beyond? And seventy-five point six percent of students said yes or maybe, which kind of shows how much it's impacted the freshmen, and I feel like this could be really good for them. Um, I'm one of the many students who thinks it was worth our time, and, um, I'd be willing to be a facilitator in the future years, but I think this is really good. Um, thank you for your time.
And just kind of add on to that, this presentation, um, not, not that it like sugarcoats anything, but this is like student-run and we, and like this presentation seems like everything was very successful. But that's kind of the art of student-led initiatives, is that there are like many failures, and that's basically what the group does. It's like, we learn how to problem solve, we learn how to overcome, we learn how to communicate with each other to just overall create a successful event, and that happened continuously throughout the year. So we didn't want to come here and just share all of our successes, but I just wanted to mention that, that like, that is the, one of the great things about Ethics Forum is that it does bring students together, and it teaches them social skills that they'll use for the rest of their lives.
Thanks. Great. Thank you.
You have one more slide. I'll make it quick. I'll make it quick.
Oh, no, you're fine.
Um, so as you know, Ethics Forum happens every single year with the senior group. So here are a few things that are happening next year. We've already brought in, um, the juniors that will be seniors next year and kind of filling them in on our successes, our failures, our like eh moments. Um, so next year, SNU Conference is already in the works. I think they're going to keep it kind of like civics themed. Um, so we'll continue our work with the honors program. This year was our first year, so we're going to try to develop that a little bit more, get some more student engagement in there. The World Affairs Council of New Hampshire is going to help us make, um, a few more connections with like outlying schools, like locally, and setting up conferences, uh, so we can really get that student engagement from everywhere. Atlantic Media Productions actually, uh, helped us this year make, uh, like video clips, films. I think we're in the process of like a documentary or something, like, I don't know. Chris said something about PBS. That makes me a little nervous, but, um. Uh, lastly, Sound of a Smile Program, which runs out of South Africa, run by Sam Fuller. Um, we're looking at creating an internship opportunity for students to go. He works in a village called Curlin Village. There's a lot of poverty there, but one thing that he constantly says is that it's an incredibly resilient group of people, and to work with them is a really incredible experience in leadership and just culture in general. So we think that's a really valuable opportunity for our students.
And then, Chris, what was the award that we got from SNU? The?
So, so we have a lot of exciting things coming up.
Congratulations. Thank you so much. If you want to just hold on one moment, because I just want to see if anyone has any questions you want to ask them or, or comments. I mean, one of the things I just want to say is, you know, thank you. This is one of those programs that makes me really proud for South Hegan. So thank you. Anybody want to make a statement or questions? Well?
Well, Stephanie literally took the words out of my mouth. This is one of those programs that makes me really proud of being a South Hegan student. Um, the fact that you guys were able to pull this off, such a large project, with so many schools, and the fact that you won an award, I didn't know that until just now. Um, it's amazing, and you guys did a great job. Really, kudos to you. Um, bringing the freshmen in, obviously, you're inspiring the next generation of leaders at South Hegan. It's wonderful to see, really. It warms my heart. I don't know, I'm just overwhelmed by how proud I am of this project. Like, I saw Ethics Forum really begin. I was a part of it, um, for their first project when they created Claus for a Cause. And I got to see these students come together who had specialties in design and marketing and sales and logistics. And Chris is seriously sitting like this at every single meeting that they have, not saying anything. This is completely led by students, and I think you guys should be super proud of what they've done.
Yes.
Yeah, take the off of, what's your name again? Sorry.
I'm Stephanie.
Stephanie, um, I, like, I'm, I'm only standing here with Lily, just because, I mean, over the past year, I found like such a love for Ethics Forum, and it was just such a great opportunity to just be with friends and just to communicate and learn new relationships. Um, when I look back at my high school career, just like the most memorable moments come from this group, and that's really what's going to hold on.
Nice. I just want to say thanks for coming. This was really great. I, I won't repeat everything everyone else says, but I mean, it's, it's a wonderful group. We're very, very proud of all of you. I appreciate you all coming and, and giving us the presentations by the time, because there's a lot of these things that we kind of hear about and we know are happening, but we don't get these kind of deep dives into them. I also want to just say I love the idea of Hype. I always have with the philosophy, because no matter what you do in life, being able to think critically, um, debate all sides, see all sides, hear different views is something that's going to, you know, really make a difference throughout your careers. So kudos to you, and good luck to the two of you that are graduating.
Yes.
Thank you, guys.
Great. Thank you so much for coming. Appreciate it.
Thank you for having us.
Right. Okay. Um, as they exit, I'm, we're going to move the, um, the audit presentation, I think, till now also, just so we can move our guests and get them home for the evening. Um, and then we'll come back to committees and the rest of our agenda.
So yeah, thank you. We have, um, Matt Murray from Vashon Clouquet, who did, uh, their firm. This was their first year back from previous years, um, doing the audits for, um, all of the districts. So Matt and his team, uh, worked with, with our accounting staff, um, and is here to present the audit for South Hegan. So you probably would need to press that button.
Nice job.
Yep.
Same, used to it from that Tuesday night, right?
See, make it on Tuesday.
Alright. So, um, I'm Matthew Murray. I'm one of the audit managers for Vashon Clouquet and Company. I'm just going to kind of go and do a high-level overview, uh, for the board. So one of the things that we're required to do, it's, um, we call it a governance communication letter, and it basically outlines the significant aspects of the audit, um, such as management's estimates, um, implementation of new GASB standards, uh, whether or not we found any internal control deficiencies. We would communicate those in there. And the significant, or I shouldn't, material audit adjustments that we have to propose, um, for the, the district this year. One of the new standards that came into effect was GASB Statement eighty-seven. Leases completely changed the way that they're reported. Um, that didn't affect anything this year, and as I mentioned in the other meetings, um, I've been told that there's the potential that it could affect the district's financial statements in the future, entering into copier leases for long periods of time. Um, we had two material adjusting general entries. Um, one of them is, like I said, it's extremely common everywhere. Um, GASB required Statement number eighty-four to be implemented in twenty-twenty-one. And basically what, uh, ended up happening is, uh, it completely changed the way that student activity funds were reported. They were previously identified as a fiduciary activity. Now, because the district has administrative control, they're reported as a governmental fund. And just the way that the district was tracking them, it's very common with basically every other district, is that you have a cash account, and then when the money comes in, they put it to the individual student activity as a liability. And then when the checks are written, it gets posted against that, and it's more or less a way to track what the actual activity, the individual activity balances are. GASB basically said, can't just track it as a liability. So what we had, um, the staff at the SAU office do was put together a, here's all the ins and the outs, and then we utilize the various bank reconciliations to make sure that the activity that we were provided is a reasonable justification to report on what was there, and then we proposed the audit adjustment based off of that. The other one was within the district's general fund. It was just, there was something that we found that was recorded as payable, that that was recorded as payable, that based off of the dating and everything that we saw, we said, okay, this shouldn't be recorded as payable, but classified as an incumbents. So ultimately on a budgetary basis, it had no effect on the district's year end budgetary fund balance. Um, the thing that's important to the town citizens, to the board, is the opinion on the district's financial statements. So we had an unmodified opinion on the district's financial statements on each reporting, each individual opinion unit. And there were five, we have five opinion units for the district, broken down into governmental activities. And then Gatsby's got criteria that says if it qualifies as a major fund, it's gotta be its own opinion unit. And then everything else gets lumped in together and it's classified as an aggregate remaining fund. Um, so through the proposed audit adjustments that we had, um, we were able to say that the district's financial statements aren't materially misstated. That we can issue an unmodified opinion and all the required disclosures are in the notes to the financial statements. Uh, one of the things that's most important to basically everybody in this room is on page twenty seven of the financial statements. So this is the budget and actual comparison. Um, the district had basically an overall approved budget after accepting items as unanticipated, um, revenues, which got the the bump up in the budget of roughly nineteen point five three million dollars. And the district under expended the budget by approximately six hundred and five thousand dollars, which is about three point one percent. Um, I believe the one, uh, Tuesday night when I talked was, I want to say it was two point, two point six or two point seven percent. And I think the one last week was four or five percent. So it's kind of, it's in line with what we see just about everywhere and it means that you actually did a pretty good job in budgeting, um. And then the overall year end fund balance, um, that went back as part of the unassigned to reduce the tax rates to the two member communities was about one point one six million dollars. And the district had voted, or the, the voters of the, the two towns had voted to use eighty five thousand dollars of the year end surplus to fund the two thousand and twenty three budget. Um, I don't know if you want me to get into any more as far as what the financial statements entail, anything like that. If there's any sort of questions, glad to answer.
Clean audit and fund balance, you did a good job.
Yes, we like, exactly.
Basically the high, a high level and, you know, if we had any, anything that kind of came up, we would address it to the board in, um, we always issue an internal control letter. And if we had any significant deficiencies or material weaknesses, we would report those items to the board in that manner.
I do have one question. I don't know, we'll, we can actually, so I noticed that there was a change in the capitalization. I mean, you might be able to help with this as well. From, you know, the ten to a hundred thousand for hu, infrastructure and then twenty thousand for other classes and that's new. We used to do a lot lower than that. Is that what caused that change? Is that something we're gonna keep going forward, not like gonna go back if we change auditors or something? What caused that?
So, what, I, I'll, I'll, I'll answer it, because I, I dealt with it with Katie, um, at the SAU office. So during, I believe it was October of two thousand and twenty one, across the SAU and all the districts, it was a kind of like a unilateral, we're adopting a new capitalization threshold. And we proposed the question to Katie as, do you want to go prospectively or do you want to go retroactive? And she said, we want to go back retroactive. So that actually, it led to a prior period adjustment. But nothing as far as, you know, we found things that the predecessor auditor did not find. This was more of a, yep, you changed your policy. We said everything that was below that threshold, we're restating the balances for that.
Okay. Great. Yep, thank you. Anyone else have questions?
Is it possible? Yes, if we get, if we get the breakdown, uh, we can absolutely do that. It's one of those, we, we disclose the things that are specifically required, like that's, it's not a required disclosure, but we can absolutely add something along those lines and I will make a note of it for next year. Um, and I'll just, all I'll have to do is just grab the information from eighty, I mean, Amy, Katie and Sarah.
Any other questions? A lot of. So.
Yes.
Really big picture, because I read it, I went through, I am obviously not an accountant. No big concerns is the bottom line.
No big concerns, no internal.
That was from the end, uh.
Yep, uh, I guess that, we would address that if it was. And, without, yeah, without going into specific details, if you looked at your statement and net position, that's kind of like a comparison to a business. Um, it looks really bad. It looks really bad for every municipality in the state of New Hampshire and it's because of a standard or two standards that Gatsby requires you to report unfunded portions of the New Hampshire Retirement Systems liabilities. So, that's actually something I, I do have down here is that if the district did not have to report those liabilities with the related deferred inflows and deferred outflows, um, it actually results in sixteen million dollars added to your net position. So right now you have a deficit of fourteen million dollars.
And as Matt said, that's every municipality.
Yes.
Right, yeah.
Tail to the.
Yep.
Yeah. Yeah. I love that number.
Yeah, me too. It was a lot of fun when that.
Right.
To the budget committee.
Yeah, that's, that's a hard explanation, I think, to many people. They don't understand how we account for things, um, and report them.
We don't necessarily like it, we just have to follow.
Any other comments, questions? Thank you very much, appreciate it. Appreciate the hard work and.
And then I'll see maybe some of you on Tuesday.
Ones, yeah, yes, we'll be here on Tuesday. Great. Okay. All right, we'll go back to our organization meeting part and the different committees. Uh, in Steve's memo to the board, there was a list of committees and I actually, I typed them up. Does anyone want the list? If it's easier to just take a look at it, we can just run down them. So you can see what they are before we go through them. And in, what I'd like to do is have, again, two people assigned to each committee, because it'll give us flexibility in case someone can't make it, allows multiple people to be in a room to just understand what's going on and helps the, the conversation to go forward. So, um, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, do you want me to list the committees or is everyone good with the list? Like, do you have the? You're looking at it?
I can put it up, I can put it up.
You want to put it up?
I can do it.
Yeah, oh yeah, we can appoint treasurer. I'm not doing clerk. For backroom today, clerk. Oh, you did? Oh, because I reached out to her today and I just wanted to verify. Okay. Alright, so we'll do those. Yeah, so while he's pulling that up, so we need to appoint a district, district clerk and a district treasurer. Um, and I talked into CJ, she is willing to be our district treasurer again. And is Peg doing assistant? Peg Bennett will also be the assistant. They've been, um, they've stepped up and said they will do it again, so I'm gonna put forward their names to nominate them. And also, so we should probably do those first before we move on to clerk. So, uh, any discussion on CJ Butler and Peg Bennett coming forward as treasurer and assistant treasurer?
She is second on that nomination?
We can take a second on the nomination. Second on the nomination. Any other, any discussion? All that, I'm gonna just say thank you very much for stepping forward. We appreciate it. All those in favor, uh, for CJ and Peg? And that's everybody. So there'll be, there's no, no no's. And then district clerk, Elizabeth Kuzma has come forward and said she would, uh, be our district clerk. And, um, replace Christine Jensen, who spent many, many years. And I believe, uh, yes. Thank you, Christine. And Beth was learning from Christine and Christine will work with her this year to give her some guidance along the way. So I'll nominate her. There's a second, second, uh, any discussion? And thank you again for stepping up. Uh, all those in favor of Elizabeth Kuzma for clerk? And that's everybody. We'll go, move on. Thank you for reminding me of that. Um, okay. Yeah, sure. Um, okay, so the first on the list is Sohegan Advisory Finance Committee.
If I could just interrupt real fast for Sunny's benefit, if we can just explain what these committees are.
Sure.
Involvements, meetings, stuff like that. I just don't want you to be like.
Before we go on, yes.
Explain anything about what.
That's true. Yes. Um, so I'll, I'll describe. So Sohegan Advisory Finance Committee works with a committee of citizens that help look at our budget and give us comments and feedback and come to the citizens to give them feedback on it. Uh, it, they start in October, September and they will meet. And then when we, once they get the budget, they start meeting weekly. And that's usually in October when we get the budget. Uh, and they do it in the evenings typically. And we go and we help answer their questions when they need it. And see if Amy's, Amy's usually there, but not always. So we should be able to guide them through or get the questions. So there is a little evening time commitment, but it's a great way to get to know the budget, because you really dig in and help answer their questions. Um, and then the next, and then there's another one too for the, uh, this SAU Budget Committee. I'm gonna do those together since they're both. So the SAU, when we come together as a whole, has its own budget. And they have their own budget committee now. We started that last year to, to, um, get more, more eyes on the budget, more questions, more feedback from the community on that one. So again, it's looking at just the SAU budget, which is a lot smaller than the school budget, but you get to meet people from all the different school, all the different school districts. So that's a, another one. Um, so those are the two big finance ones. Do we, do you, Steve, do you think, is it worth going through all of them, Sunny, or just as we go?
As we go along, yeah. The only I'd add to the budget committees, we all serve on the budget committee in a, in an indirect way.
And, yeah.
Subcommittees, but these are the primary individuals that serve.
That will show up. And, and typically we look at everyone, well, you know, we used to say everyone take two. If you, everyone takes two, we pretty much cover. So if there's two committees that interest you, kind of put your hand up on those.
I helped advisory finance that weekly. They weren't quite as often. They.
It was every, maybe every, yeah, maybe, uh, when we first got the budget, it was, but then it tapered off quickly.
Yep. They, they would typically meet in between like board meetings, so that they would have, you know, have the first draft and then they would meet and then the board would have the second draft and they would meet.
Yeah, yeah, it wasn't quite as intense as some years.
Right, yeah.
So before we, I think it is probably worth going through the whole list, because well, when you're trying to pick which ones, there are some that like, like, I don't think, I think I'm on the Constitutional Interpretation Committee and that.
Yes. There's nothing, yeah.
So it might be like, okay, I'll take that with another heavy lift, uh, you know, so when you're trying to pick, it's, it's kind of helpful to know.
Okay, so I'll, I'll run down them real quick. So Athletic Liaison, literally if you have, if there's questions that come from the community or discussion that they feel needs to happen with the athletic director, you can kind of be the spearhead to help those communications happen. Few and far between, only when needed. It's not a regular meeting. Um, there's a Brick School Maintenance and Improvement Committee, uh, used to happen, this bringing it back. I don't know what the plan is on meeting, Amy, on that one, but usually it was, it used to be like maybe once a month, maybe.
I think it'll mostly, it, it might be a bit of a heavy lift just in the very beginning.
Okay.
Make some determined, to figure out what, how to develop a plan for the funds that are there. And then also, um, looking at the lease that is, and that's actually between the SAU and the Brick School District, but, um.
But it's for the brick school that's in the village.
Right.
Where the SAU is located.
So we discovered there's funds in an account that we need to determine how those funds will be used. So it would be meeting with, um, myself and Roger to
Okay.
Really sort of develop a, a mini capital improvements plan.
Okay. So not super intense.
No.
Yeah.
I wouldn't say, uh, as a year round activity, it won't be that, that.
Okay. Um, there's a capital improvement plan, uh, and that's usually for just this town of Amherst. I don't believe there's one that meets with up in Mount Vernon.
I got booted off this one, so.
You got booted off. Okay, so there's none for Mount Vernon.
They don't want Mount Vernon.
Okay. Uh, yeah, it's for Amherst. Again, we coordinate, we try to coordinate our high expenditures with the town, so we're not putting everything forward at the same time.
And Sunny actually knows somebody quite well on the Mount Vernon version of this, so.
Oh, great. Excellent.
And that's, um, typically they, we meet over the summer.
Yeah. Okay.
At the town.
Okay. So it's a summer.
Yep.
To be, got it. Um, communication, this is something we started doing a little bit more last year. We were trying to meet with our communities up in Mount Vernon and, and in Amherst to try and engage and let them ask questions, come, come way around budget time, ask us about the budget. Or just a listening session, hey, what are you hearing about the school? What are your concerns? What can we do? How do we get more coordination going? So we're, we're always trying to improve that one. So that's more kind of like ad hoc. Um, do anything we can to improve reaching out to our communities is what we're trying to do on that one. Community council, that's where we go to the community council meetings. Um, that's a run by the students here and we appoint five community members and there's, we have two board members go. And it's every Monday after school, except for the first Monday of the month, it's in the evening. So, and it's only runs from like three to three forty-five when it's right after school and the evening is a two hour meeting. So they have more time and it, then they have a, a, a voice in our school. And looks at, they look at policies and, and, uh, try to help guide us. So, that's, that's really a neat program. So if you have time after school, that is a great way to see how this school. I'm just going through them and we'll come back, because like Sunny hasn't heard of them, so we're just going quickly as, I can't. Constitutional interpretation, we have a constitution that formed Sohegan. That's if something comes up and how to interpret the constitution, they meet. I'm not even sure they've ever met in a couple of years. Yes. So that's one, if needed. Uh, Expendable Trust Fund Advisory Committee, we, we have some expendable trust funds that exist in the towns and there's money that needs to be spent each year out of them. We get together and say, we, we work with Christine and Amy on how can we direct the funds in the best way. And that's, that's really, what, few times a year, literally, few times a year. We have a Building and Grounds Committee that meets, um, throughout the year to talk about how to do, work on the maintenance of our buildings and any other improvements, trying to schedule short term and long term, working with Roger, our Director of Facilities. Manifest, every two weeks, there is a manifest check run. And we have two people who have to look at it, approve it. It's all done electronically, so you can do it from the, from your couch and it's easy to do.
Yeah, I just wanted to mention, Stephanie.
You're gonna do a training.
Yes, yep. Katie and I are gonna do a training for all Manifest signers. Um, we'll organize it in person. We can also do it via Zoom. There's some, um, nice digital communication tools that we have. We can actually communicate via chat with the signers. So just to try to avoid kind of emails back and forth, because they, it gets, um, it can get, things can get lost that way.
But you get to see how the funds are being spent in the school and you kind of you can look at it and understand where things go. We usually encourage the new people to kind of pick it up, because it's a great way to kind of see where money is being spent and how, and you get to meet the finance staff as well with questions. NHSBA and policy, a lot of that is policy committee work, um, where, you know, one of the things that we, that is under our purview are school policies. So there is a heavy lift on that one. There's a lot, there were, this past year, there's a lot of summer work, a lot of fall work. And we usually take big sections and we go through policies. So it is a heavy amount of, of work. Um, but you dig in deep to the policies and you bring forward recommendations for anything that might be changed. So that one, that one met during the day, right? This past, a lot of times during, but that could be changed based on who's on policy.
Not usually, because, um, because you have administrators and other staff that are contributing.
During the day.
So you meet during the day so that, that you're, you're not forcing them into overtime.
Okay.
Generally speaking.
Yeah, makes sense, so.
But you couldn't do one during the evening, but.
Policy.
Out of respect.
Yeah. And that, that is a lot of work, both in the committee time and outside the committee time to dig in and review and understand the legalese behind it as well. PPC, we're gonna be working with our PPC. We don't have a union here, but we have a, a. PPC, we're going to be working with our PPC. We don't have a union here, but we have a, a group that forms called the, if I could remember correctly, Personnel Policy Committee, yes.
Ding ding.
Yes, um, and we are in negotiations this coming year on that, on the, on the contract. We don't have a contract per se, it's a group of policies, um, but that's going to be a lot of work this, this fall on that one. But we work with our teachers to figure out what we can change, what they're looking for and strengthen our programs. Uh, our sec, we're going to hold off on and to discuss at the SAU. Cause I think we need to verify which district it is. Yep. Um, and then there's the selectmen. We were trying to meet with our selectmen for Amherst and Mount Vernon, just go to their meetings, kind of be seen, get known, get communications going, that sort of thing. So is there, if there's interest and availability to go to some of their meetings, that's what we're looking for is get that communication and, and relationship going. And then Wellness Policy, we're bringing that back that's, uh, used to be around. And, um, best way to describe that is it's what staff, administration.
Food service.
Food service, and it's just about home wellness of the buildings and the staff.
Yeah, and it's statutory required. We have to.
Oh, statutory required. Okay.
You have to host an event once a year, right?
You have to, uh.
Yeah.
Yeah. And how often? How often is that going to meet and plan? Any idea?
We hope, I think probably quarterly, but maybe monthly. And we're trying to have one before the end of school.
And that'll be with all school districts together.
Yeah, we're doing NSAU wide.
Yeah. And Chris, okay. So those are all our committees. There's a lot of them. So they'll pick at least two and, uh, as we go through them. We'll. Yeah, that's on, I did, yeah, I did, I did them. I did it completely different.
Sorry, you covered it.
I've had both finance.
You nailed it.
And, and just for the record, I mean, you could have three of us if there was a high level of interest because that doesn't break quorum rules. Um, and at least my opinion is the more brains and years on the matter, the better chance for success.
Okay. On the one hand, I'm going to say I agree. On the other hand, I would rather we had two and people, like I don't want people to spread themselves thin and then not show because it becomes a really heavy lift for the remaining people.
Understood. Um, yeah, so I, I, I'm, I'm in someone agreement. I want to keep at least two. If there's someone who's really interested in something, we can look at it, but I'd like to try and keep it to two unless there's a, a real desire.
And maybe we could even call the third person like an alternate or an extra, so they know they can come if they've got the time, but that their priority should be the two that they're primary, you know, the ones that they're primary on.
Right. All right, let's tackle the Sohegan Finance Committee. Who's interested? I'll, I'll take it. Dan, Dan and I, um, yeah, we've been working on that for a few years with finance. Um, SAU Budget Committee? Anybody? You want me to take this? I could take that one. Yeah. Me? And yeah, if, if someone wants to join me, let me know. Um, definitely that one's with all the, all the, all the other districts together. And ways and means from all the districts, so. It gets, gets spicy.
A little spicy.
A little spicy.
A little spicy. Well, not next year.
Well, um, Athletic Liaison, who's interested in working with the Athletic Director? Buddy? Yeah, anybody? Dan, that, that one, you know, that one, having one is not a big deal because that's a, if something comes up sort of situation. It's not a regular meeting to me. Um, Brick School Maintenance and Improvement Committee.
Who's that?
Yeah.
Christie, who else? Anyone interested? Sunny? Yep. Awesome.
It's gonna be.
That'll be good because you'll meet, you know, a group of people at the administrative, so that's awesome. Uh, the Amherst Capital Improvement Plan. If they don't want Mount Vernon reps, sorry. They were told they wanted Amherst people only.
I did it last year. It was great. Unless somebody else wants to do it. Do it again.
Us.
I'll do it with you, Dan.
Okay. It was.
Dan and John.
It was really, really good, good experience.
Yeah, you, you end up meeting the DPW Director, the Rec Director and everybody and work with them coordinating. Um, Communication with the Towns. Love to have an Amherst and a Mount Vernon rep on that one. Sunny? Yeah? Anybody else from Amherst or might take in that one?
I'll do that.
Anna? Awesome. And Community Council. Who wants, who's interested in Community Council? Meeting with the kids and I had a community, yes, Christie, I got you. Anybody else want to do, Sunny, is that something you're able to do or is that, because I know you said you were kind of interested in? That's okay. That's okay. Cause we can go back and revisit what it is. Yes.
But with Community Council, only one of us votes.
Yes.
Yeah, so I've been doing, but like we could take turns too, because sometimes that's like we go and do it together.
Yeah, there's, there's times I can't make it and sometimes you can't make it. We work together. So. Yeah, we can, and we can look to see what you have to make sure what it looks like. Um, Constitutional Interpretation Committee.
It's an easy, easy lift and I will take it again.
That's a, yeah, if we hear from them.
If there's ever an issue, I am all over that.
You're on it.
I'd love to have.
I'll join that one with you.
All right.
Anna and John. All right. Anna and John. Um, Expendable Trust Advisory Committee, who wants to work with the trusts? Anyone?
I'll do it.
Anything? Christie? Anyone else? I mean, I can jump on that one. I don't care. That's easy.
Who wasn't, sorry?
Me for Expendable Trust, Christie and me. Um, Building and Grounds Committee. Who wants to work on that? Awesome. Who else? Building and Grounds, anyone? Going once? Going twice? We'll leave it at Stephen and come back to. We'll see, we'll get you a second person to help you out.
I'll do that.
I could help you. You want to do?
Yeah, I mean, we're going to do kind of figure out what that mission of that.
Yes.
Is.
We're.
So I, I can be part of that thinking.
All right.
There were some questions about that last year. What?
Yeah.
Actual scope and role that we're going to take on.
Yeah, and it, and it could easily change, like not turn into JFAC. That's going to probably be a discussion. I'm assuming it, SAU that's going to happen. Of JFAC? I don't, just Building and Grounds is what I'm looking for. Numbers of it, because I figured from Building and Grounds, if they form JFAC, then one person from Building and Grounds can be the JFAC or they can be the JFAC members. If, depending if that goes forward. I don't know how that's going to be formed. Manifest, who would like to look at the, at the manifest? Everybody. Stephen?
I'll continue to, if anyone else wants to.
Dan? Stephen and Dan, it's nice that you can do it this way now and not have to go in the office. Yeah. Um, Policy Committee. Who's interested in policy?
Yes, please.
Interested in, okay, because we can go back and rework if you. Yeah. It, that's where you can really dig in and get some good information. Yes. Okay, great.
The three for policy.
Um, two, I think.
Yeah, John.
We can go, we can, but it was, I have Anna and Sunny. Was there a third?
John, I said.
Oh, John wants to go into.
Yes.
And that I'm going to say they're going to only want two is my gut feel. That's going to come back and be a push. You know, are you sure? Because we can talk about it.
You can come.
Yeah, you can come.
And you can contribute. What they get a little testy about is.
Is three voting. You won't, yeah, we won't have three voting, only two voting numbers, I think.
But the, the, the brain and that contribution would be appreciated.
Yeah. Awesome. Yeah, yeah, we'll call her, we'll, we'll call her an alternate, but um, in case, and that'll be a good thing if someone, if only two can go, because someone can't go, you can be a voting member and we'll have the two.
It's actually really helpful because, because the way it works is there has to be someone from each of the three districts in order for us to meet.
Yes.
So if for any reason two people aren't there, then we can't meet.
Someone's ill or someone's out of town and so yeah, awesome. And you can go anytime because we don't, that's the nice thing being Sohegan, we have seven people, so we don't hit quorum until we have four. But when we work with other districts, you try to keep it even, especially if there's voting on things, we try and keep it even to two and two. So we don't have more. All right. Um, NHSBA, is anyone interested in being the liaison to NHSBA?
What does that entail?
There's a, there's an annual meeting that you can go to and there's usually districts send, send in, um, different resolutions, yeah, that they would be interested in bringing forward. And you represent our school district at that annual meeting.
Do we know when that is?
It's usually in October. I think it was end of Oc, really end of October.
Yeah.
Yeah. So.
I mean, I am happy to do that. I just, the only problem is I, it's hard to say obviously when we look ahead, what's going on in October.
You and I can do it and we'll figure out.
Whoever's available, that'd be great.
So all right, so Anna and I will do that. Um, PPC. I would like to do PPC if no one, if that's one.
I want to come in.
Anna would be really good if she. Or she's got policy. If we, if we did it and then you can show up when we need. Or Dan.
Yeah.
Could as well.
I mean, I, I, I thought about it because I, I love the idea of doing PPC also. I don't think I want to do both PPC and policy.
Those would be too big, heavy.
Right. I think I'm going to end up spreading myself too.
That's what I can keep doing.
Too thin.
Because we're getting into things and we've gotten to know them.
So they're awfully fun.
They are awfully fun.
Yeah.
Of PPC.
Hi, Andy.
So, oh, there you go. If you didn't want, I mean, the other option would be I could draw policy, come over to that. And if Sunny wanted to take my policy seat.
I don't mind staying on.
Okay.
They seemed fine to, um, switch you and I out.
Yeah, they were great about letting me come when I had policy things to bring up with them and I'd love to keep doing that. I think it's nice to.
Yeah, they, they asked for, they asked for a little consistency this coming year because of, um, because of the negotiations coming up.
Right.
So yeah, it'd be probably good if we can.
Yeah, I think that was it. I think you have more during the day availability than me. So with negotiations, that might be helpful too, because I'd like, like we said, a policy, if one of us is missing, it's okay. You can see negotiations. It's probably, it's harder.
Yeah.
It's not like to zoom in fast and.
Right. Um, all right, Selectmen Liaison, Amherst. Who's interested? That can be a one.
I go for, I go anyways.
The Selectmen one? We haven't talked about Selectmen.
You did the Towns, something or other. I thought that was for the Selectmen.
CIP.
No, no, that was different.
That's Dan and John. Constitutional Interpretation, I've ran at NHSBA. Communication, maybe you're thinking about communication.
No, no, you said Town, Sunny for Mount Vernon and Anna for Amherst. I thought you were talking.
Communications.
That was communication.
Sorry. Yeah, because that can be ad hoc on top when you have time and we can talk about how we worked it out and.
So Dan's going to do the select.
Dan will do, yeah, Dan will do Amherst, um, all right. And then the last one is Wellness. Wellness Committee, who's interested in working with the Wellness Committee at the SAU?
Everybody jumped at once.
I've done it, I've done it before. I, I, I'd be happy to do that.
Nice. And, okay, John will be Wellness. Yeah. There's anyone else? You get stuck, not able to go?
I would, um, yeah, I'll look for a replacement.
We'll give you free stress.
That's, I mean, stress, pretty stressful. I haven't found a stress ball that lasts me more than about three weeks. All right, I'll send that out in email to everybody. Um, you want, do you want to run down what we have?
Yes.
It's on Trello?
Yeah.
Okay.
It's on Trello.
We need to have to get Sunny onto Trello. She knows how to use it. We'll sit and show you Trello and get you a sign in for that. All right.
Just make a comment before, about PPC. My, my request is that because it's a negotiation year, that that the committees seek to inform the board of preparations, ideas, concepts before the negotiations begin and keep the board abreast of the, the responses so that we, you have the opinions of the board members behind you when you go into those discussions. And I don't know if that means additional meetings or specifically focused meetings to get that done or how exactly the means to that, but I think it'd be really important for us to have the exposure to the information and an ability to offer feedback.
Okay, thank you for that input.
You're welcome.
Um, the other thing I want to add is, uh, Community Council rep, we're going to put out an advertisement for that because we changed to advertising for that in the spring, so they're ready. Uh, so since our next meeting is May, and then the next one is when school is pretty much out, so I'd like to be able to appoint them in May. So we'll put a plea out and we'll make sure we, I'll work with Abby to get advertisements out, but we have two positions available. And again, they're going to be a two-year position going forward. Um, and they're going to rotate with the other members that are there who are, and we're appointing them for a two-year term now. But there are two-year positions open and I will talk to the two individuals who are on that one year that we appointed last year. Um, it was Rick Katzenberg and Will Lute. So they can reapply and they'll be a two-year position. Or, you know, anyone else interested in the community, please apply, send it to Abby and we'll get advertisements out. So we can talk about that and then get those appointments out.
So these are two Amherst reps that are up?
It now can be Amherst or Mount Vernon on this because we only have one Mount Vernon rep right now. So we have an Amherst and Mount Vernon. Terrific. I'd say we go with, go with both.
Is it possible that we can also derive a list of all the other appointments that we have to do, like the book committee that we had to go back a couple of weeks ago? You know, we never appointed. So if we can scrub through and see
Yeah.
Out of all the things that we have to appoint people to, maybe we can draft a list, put it into Trello so we're prepared.
Yeah, and that one policy, we, I, we were talking about some things that we want to change, we want to have to go through Policy Committee. And, and I think part of that is appointing. It'd be nice to have those appointed in September and they serve a year, so there's no appointing for a specific purpose.
Right.
So yes, thank you. That's, that's a good idea. To throw those out, we should go through and.
Done it. Abby on.
Okay, thank you. Okay, uh, we did the audit presentation group. Public comment. We have no public here.
We do have Zoomers.
We do have Zooms. People. If there's anyone on Zoom who would like to speak during public input, please raise your hand. And then we will work on getting you brought forward as a panelist.
Dan's on.
Dad.
I almost raised my hands.
I don't see anyone raising their hand. Okay, we will come back later for a second public input session. Thank you. Uh, reports received. Principal's report is up first. Does anyone have questions? For Mike? If one of his last meetings is principal.
Yeah.
Um.
Ask one?
Yes.
So one thing for the part, I had no, I, no, no, no concerns or anything. I was looking at the time missed for sports activities. And I'm just curious, why is golf so much higher than everything else? Like what is it about golf? Particularly?
Tea times. Patients get two.
Okay.
And they also play two, three times a week. That is okay.
Is that a tee time issue also? Like the for competitions, they can't get courses on the weekends or?
Typically at the mercy of the. And the state tournament, I was, you know, I was a golf coach one year.
Yeah.
Coach golf one year. And the, um, a lot of them are full days. When you have, when you get to the state tournament or individual tournament, full days.
Okay.
It's, it's full eighteen for those, that level of state.
How big is our golf team?
We have two golf teams.
Yeah.
We have co-in. I like, uh, days have been two for a year.[1771.77]
Okay. Okay. Yeah, no, it's great. I, I just, and I'm, I, I just, I noticed that it's about twice what everyone else is, and I, I've been meaning to ask that question on what is?
It's about five weeks, it's a short season.
Oh, so it's a lot of time in a compressed amount of times. Okay, yeah.
I yelled at kids on a screen before put it in front of me, that was my last day as a golf coach. He doesn't, wasn't right for me.
No. All right, thank you.
So I, I have a bunch of questions. Um, the first one, like, in terms of um. The last, I would say, four weeks, I've had multiple. Um, people come to me um. With a various amount of circumstances that have actually happened here, and personally, I've been involved in a couple, right? So, um, the first one is, people are telling or reporting that we're having a vandalism problem in the annex. So, I don't know how many cases we're actually seeing there. Um, I got a screenshot of one case. What are we seeing over there? What's going on? How is we addressing it and so forth?
Yeah, um. And we are, we have addressed that.
I believe it was referred to as devious licking.
The men were starting, we're taking film, showing some property. We had a, a pretty foggy, heavy with the windows. You know, he said, you know, probably got anywhere from, you know. You know, thousands or twenty-five hundred dollars. And uh, and so I won't say it's more so this year, but it's, it's not one of the things that like.
Cause they're reporting like soap dispensers being ripped down and broken, obviously toilet type issues, bathroom graffiti in the mirrors and the walls. Okay.
I can, I can also talk on that. It's. Still kind of a daily occurrence where you'll realize that a soap dispenser has just like had the bag ripped out of it. Or that the sinks in the annex have had the wires underneath from the automatic hand sensor ripped out. Or they've somehow configured it so that it's constantly flowing and it spills over. Um. Uh, it's definitely subsided a bit over the year, but.
Okay. The, the next question, if I may.
No, please.
The next one is uh with regards to bullying, right? And so. I've become aware of four circumstances in the last three weeks. One of them, a rather severe case of bullying. Um, where. I think amongst the populace of the kids in the annex. This seems to be acceptable or tolerated, or I, I don't know what the words are. I've referred every single one of those people to. Uh, to, to the administration, which is what we're supposed to do. But what is our guidance counseling staff doing to address that? Specifically amongst the group inside the annex. And then the subsequent question I've got is. Is the experiment of putting our ninth graders in the annex. Is that gonna be reassessed and possibly revisited to bring into the main building next year for upperclassment mentoring? Because what I'm hearing. In the eighth grade populace. Those problems are also prevalent, but maybe more intense.
Uh, the history of how pretty. It's the second year that freshman have been primarily housed over there, along with art classes, along with science classes, along with oral language classes. But the freshman team classes are out of. Uh, housed by freshman class. The thought process when we made that decision. Coming out of COVID, we had the team classes, we had safer class classes. And you were getting into some, some heavy work with the ninth grade counselor. Around the gang coming out with personalized plans to do that work. And so, since it was made, uh, after the middle of my first year, that we're going to put ninth grade. In the annex for academic support and social. Um, social, emotional support, give them targeted attention. And thought that transitioning into there would be a, a banner to hopefully. Academic support them and. Um, and what we're noticing more so this year, the, the, the behaviors. Um, you know, basically a, kind of a general casualness of. School care, but not to label the whole ninth grade as, as a big. There is not handling well. We do have a growing demographic. Who are um apathetic, apathetic schools who are um not more than basic learners. Um, and have a, you know, some issue feeling. And, and right there are a bit fine, right? And here admitted to, you know, not. You know, moving kids from the academic set, we're trying to support. So, um. And, and after that. Uh, but we are considering. And yet that is seriously disgusting. Losing. Old buildings for the team next year for competitive. One of them is the, the reason that have been immersed with ten people of grade more than they are. We sure like to throw here, and that's just over here, and that's over here, but a little more on a regular basis. Um, because we are finding that, you know, they are kind of, you know, in a academy, kind of setting. You know, we want them to be. So, back to the second question about bullying. Anytime there's a bullying report. That the issue is, many times that stuff is not reported. You know, one. At all, two, we have a time limit, you know, which makes it difficult for them to respond. So when we do have an opportunity to respond and we know about it, we have a process that we go to, use the office. Uh, and the campus monitors, we have to even our school resource officers to help. As far as, you know, uh, our counseling, we do have advisory, we'll be vetted, advisory activities to. Press, you know, behaviors and proactive. Um, we have the small. Psych and art. Um, but I will say there's growing, growing need.
Uh, excuse me, a growing amount of kids that have social, emotional. Behaviors that are getting in the way of learning and um, and we're just kind of addressing it as we. As we, as we can.
Okay, I've got two asks. The first ask is on the vandalism stuff. If we can start. Getting that in the principal's report on a monthly basis, because I'm assuming we're reporting it, we got a policy, it has to be reported uh per our agreement with the Amherst Police. Um, you know, the, and, and making sure that we're continuously aware of new instances that are occurring, because. It's a cost to not only us, but we want to make sure that, or I want to make sure that we're aware of, number one, it's happening. To what frequency and degree, and then do we need extra support? In that building or the location where it's happening, and that could be something from a budgetary standpoint that we're gonna need to address next year. So maybe on a monthly basis, this past month, we've had two instances of vandalism, cost us thirty-nine dollars or cost us nothing, or whatever that, that, that number could be. I would appreciate that.
And, and can I, and even if it's not a cost, but time for a maintenance person to take out of.
It's unfair to him to be cleaning up all this stuff on, on, on a night, nightly or daily, uh, daily basis. And the other thing, when it comes to, to, to bullying, and, and I know our role as board members is not to manage the school, that's not our role. But as a parent and as a community member and as somebody who. Had the opportunity to be involved in circumstance, I'm gonna ask that we revisit the topic. With our um, uh, our advisories, our counselors. And push out, how do you report, what's the proper behavior in a school setting, and more importantly, how we should be treating each other and. And really embracing the Sanhegan sex. Just revisit that, because they, literally, I kid you not, Saturday night, a parent came up. And I'm like, you're the third person. In this short window that has told me about this. So clearly, out in the community, this is a problem that people are talking about. And as a board member, I just want to make sure that we are giving it the proper due, because every kid deserves to come to school in an environment. Where there's no complications and they're free to learn. I mean, you, I know you agree with this.
Oh, yeah.
But I'm just asking that we, we, we revisit that, make it fresh in the minds of our students, so they know. How they can go ahead and, and, and bring these, these concerns forward.
Thank you, appreciate, appreciate those comments. Um. Anyone else have questions? On the principal's report?
I have one. Um, the um, the section on graduation requirements, I, I really appreciate the summary of the outline. That's helpful to see what's coming. Um, is it the idea that? That that committee work is done and that's kind of just, that's it? The committee work is done and you move on, or do you envision that being some kind of like recurring, like? Test of the requirements on an annual basis or every two years or, or something like that?
I see particularly, we're in the, we're in the process of it, so it's gonna be reoccurring. Next year, the work is gonna continue. Uh, they did a, a lot of heavy lifting, as you can see, kind of outlined. They spent, the, it was a year's project. There was a subcommittee. Of, of ten to twelve people actively involved. They went through a process to gain, you know, input from students, teachers, staff. Community members. Uh, we hosted a coffee in conversation at night with parents to, to get some information. And they are going to uh be, you know, outlining. The work that's in front of us around graduation requirements. So in this. Report that you're gonna get, you're gonna see like a timeline of, you know, what they anticipate to.
Going forward.
Moving forward.
Correct.
It will impact policy.
Yes.
Graduation requirements are a policy.
It'll impact policy and it'll impact budget.
And um, when you, um, in the executive summary, when you outline the issues the committee sought to address. Um, yeah, I. I guess maybe that's another way to read it, is, you know, what problem are you trying to solve? Is that how you envision? That, like, the, why are we even looking at this? Like, what is the? What are we trying to achieve by, by doing this? And is, if that was already part of your thinking, great. If it wasn't, please make sure that that is um. A part of it. And kudos, you know, section five, the minority opinion, I think that's really valuable, and I appreciate you concluding that as well.
Yep. Uh, and to be honest, I'm not heavily involved in that. I kind of outlined what I thought the process should be. The dean of faculty. And the domain leaders. Took the lead on.
Okay.
On this work in partnership with Karen Shininess in the council.
So I'm assuming that we're not looking at anything changing for next year.
Uh, you won't see any significant changes, but there'll be a presentation.
Okay. Okay. Two little, two pieces that I just had, so that, one of the things I know you talk about chat GPT, which we know a lot of people are using now. Um, I can say. Um, being at some recent college presentations, a lot of colleges are taking this on, and I, I think we should. Reach out to colleges that our kids are going to and see what they're implementing, because I can say a lot of them are actually embracing it, because they know they can't stop it, but they're putting. Policies around it to acknowledge what the kids are using, how they're using it and stuff. So we can teach our kids what they might expect going out. About documenting and doing things like, I mean, I don't, it's gonna be hard to stop this. It's more of how do we manage?
Yeah, no, we, uh, we've had some conversation, uh, not some, uh, uh, a number of conversations around it. And it's one of those things at the beginning of the year, we weren't really talking a whole lot about it, but then around January, it, it kind of was in your face.
Yeah.
You know, and uh, and so we've, uh, you know, made some short-term adjustments on how to manage it at, at, at the building level. Uh, will be something we discuss at the, at the SAU level that will influence the direction of the, of the buildings moving into uh twenty-three, twenty-four.
Yeah, okay.
Yep.
One of, one of the interesting things about chat GPT is it will make up information.
Yeah.
It's.
Yes.
You know, there was a, a very prominent attorney who was just accused of sexually assaulting somebody. And it, it came up with a fake newspaper article about it and, you know, just out of the blue.
Yeah, so it's. Yeah, it's documenting what you're using, how you use it and all that.
But in a lot of ways, it's similar to the, when the calculators first came around, you know, it was, there was a lot of uproar about how it was gonna affect.
Yeah, that's a great way of looking at it. You know, graphing calculators changed the way we taught math, right?
Right.
Chat, you know, AI will te- influence how we. Teach in our schools and teach.
Still have to be creative in, in what you put in to try to get the right information out, so. It's how we use it.
It's how we use, exactly. So I think that's. Probably what, it'll be interesting to hear what the teachers come up with in the faculty and administration. Um. Any other questions? Any other comments? Or, thank you, Mike. I want to say, you know, that you guys have had a very busy spring, understanding all the. Interviews you've been doing for physicians and. Handling transitions and. Thank you for all your hard work and your staff as well.
Yeah, we have good people, right, doing good stuff right now.
Yeah. And just a little plug, senior projects are coming up, and you can see a lot of people are having their senior project applied pieces happening right now, you know, various. Parts get advertised, so it's coming, it's in May. Uh, what else? Treasurer's report, any comments on treasurer's report for anyone, questions? The facilities report. The work getting done in the building to maintain is appreciated, so thank you.
Would, um, maybe just the whole vandalism thing, I mean. My son sent me a picture of a t-shirt stuffed in a toilet, so I, I'm aware of some of these things too. Um. Maybe is that something that could be added to facilities report? Would that be a good place to?
I think the.
Quantify?
The principal's report is probably.
This?
Disciplinary.
Yeah, so it's, it might be more than just costs of something.
Uh, it's, it's a, it's a place where wo- work of the facilities people is. Presented. I, it's just, I don't want to make more work for anybody, but um. If they're. Replacing all this stuff that's not scheduled maintenance, then. It, it, it should be here as well, I guess, because they're replacing small things, replacing big things.
Yeah. Mike, we'll let you make a judgment on that where it belongs.
I'll, I'll gather some more information around this, like, you know, you know, with, I'll work with Roger and Mike. And Sarah Gilman, Robin, you know, and just see kind of where we're at with it, you know.
All right, um, consent agenda. I'm just gonna go down each one of them to see if there's any. Comments, questions, changes, and then we can try and approve the whole consent agenda as one. Um, the German cultural exchange field trip application. Any comments, questions about that one? It does.
We've, we've had them stay with us in the past, coming from Mannheim, and I think. I think it's great.
My, my only comment is that it's right up against senior project. Applied piece and right before AP tests and makes it hard on seniors a little bit. That's my only comment. Besides that, I'm very excited this is back.
Those purely practical matter, it's happening over break, and I think, uh. I mean, some, some people, some people may prioritize, I'm gonna stay home on break and work on this, because I'm a senior and I've got AP tests and all that, but. Uh, you know, hopefully if it becomes a regular thing, that'll be something they then.
They can do a junior.
Program and do their junior year.
Just, yeah, but juniors take AP. But anyway, that's my only comment. I'm very excited this is back, um, and it's been a great program in the past, so it's exciting. Um. Budget transfer? In there, anyone questions? No, um, unanticipated revenue of seven hundred dollars.
Yeah, wellness.
Yeah, wellness.
Yeah, that's the wellness. How to spend our money. From, from health trust. Are there any comments on any of the draft minutes from December eighth, January third, eighteenth? January twenty-sixth, February twenty-second, March ninth, or March twenty-seventh? Been a while, huh?
You needed evidence. You've been working at it, everybody. You guys have been working.
Um, yeah, we've had a lot of meetings. Uh, any comments, anything that needs to be changed in there, any adjustments? None? Why? I'll take a motion to accept the consent agenda. So move. Moved by Mr. Vayu, second by Ms. Peters. I, we've already kind of discussed it. I, we've already kind of discussed it, so I'm going to put it to vote. Those in favor of approving the consent agenda? Raise your hand. Any opposed? No abstentions? That passes, we're good. Awesome. Community council update.
I, so according to the bylaws, as of, I think I get to serve until
Until.
The day before graduation, yeah. Let's see, it's been a while since I gave the report, okay? So I'd like to say that community council or executive council specifically provided a list of names of students that might be interested in serving on the book challenge review. We didn't really hear back on that. We really just provided a list of students that might be interested. But I think that was important for, you know, students to be able to choose students to look at that. We reviewed the student handbook. At the beginning of the student handbook, there's a letter that's signed by community council, so we wanted to make sure that community council actually agreed with it. We've had a student handbook committee working all year just to make sure that we agreed with what was being brought forward, obviously. Community council is very involved in these sort of like disciplinary procedures, different policies regarding student life at Sohegan, like the schedule or where you can eat at lunch, things like that. We had a proposal to allow community council members to be removed after they've met a certain number of absences, whether they were excused or unexcused. The process for getting an excusal from a community council meeting is to email the clerk and say, hey, I won't be there. You can list a reason or not list a reason and you'll be marked as excused. With our current bylaws, there's basically an infinite number of excused absences that students can use. We have a running graph of council members attendance and it's color-coded. There's green, yellow, and red for present, excused, and unexcused, and it's very colorful. It's been a lot great, a lot better this year. With more people getting excused absences, we haven't had to have many meetings about attendance. But obviously, it's still an issue. Stephanie and Christine best definitely know that we've had issues getting quorum before. Sometimes we've had to stop the meeting because we've reached the perfect number and we can vote on the minutes now.
If no one can leave, lock the door.
Right. Executive council also heard from some freshman teachers that brought a proposal. It hasn't been brought to the full council yet, but they're bringing a proposal to implement hall passes into the freshman class because of the vandalism issue and students being truant from class pretty consistently. Again, that hasn't been brought to community council yet, but I know that they've had a discussion with the freshmen on their teams about that. And it seems like they're picking up their act at least a little bit, the threat of hall passes, which is nice to hear. They'll have their opportunity to argue their case once it does come to community council. And right now, we have a proposal to establish a records retention policy for community council. This is my senior project applied piece. Historically, community council has had, or at least in my time here in the past four years, there hasn't been a lot of access to old community council records. You'd have to ask around, you'd get some vague Google Drive from twenty seventeen that somebody just so happened to leave behind. Maybe you'll find an old newspaper article in the Sabre Scribe that's kept in the library. But really, there's not much. And when we're making decisions on, you know, big issues in the Sohegan community, like whether or not we want to reward wellness credits for participating in sports, it's nice to have a version of the minutes from when that was proposed in twenty fourteen. That was one of the things that I uncovered when I was assembling an archive of old community council records. You might have seen, I've posted solicitations on social media for people to submit records. I've been reaching out to old teachers who have maybe moved on to new schools, or I had a long phone call with Paul Schlotman, who used to work in the community council, and now a lot of you have heard that name. And this is something I've been very passionate about for a while. This, I'm just going to go on a personal round here. There's a list of a council report. Community council has been the focus of my high school career pretty much since freshman year. It was introduced to me by Tony Dussette, the advisor of community council. He was my social studies teacher when I was a freshman and I was immediately hooked. I, I think co-sponsored my first proposal on freshman year and being able to go back and look at all of these minutes from the people who have come before me earlier in my high school career, seeing where I made mistakes, where other people have made the same mistakes. It's really fulfilling, I think, and it's appropriate for me to do as my senior project because I'm a huge history nerd. I love looking at government records. Dan knows this, obviously. And this is something I've been really passionate about, so I'm glad that community council has taken a liking to my proposal. It's a simple amendment to our bylaws, just saying that the clerk has to like publish an archive and has to retain an archive of all of our proposals and our meeting minutes. While that seems pretty simple, it hasn't been done historically. There was a collection of binders that used to be kept in student services and with the dean of students, and that was lost after Kelly Driscoll left Sohegan. I'm working on recovering those. I've searched the vault in the main office, different division rooms, different book rooms. I'm working on the S A U. They haven't responded to me yet. I'm going to have to go back.
Haven't, loving your email.
Okay, okay.
I think this is great. I love historical records, especially this place. I think you are right in the right spot. I think it is awesome.
Yeah, I've read standards of mind and heart. I've gone through the copies of the old yearbooks and, you know, sometimes there are notes written by old students and I feel really involved in the community here at Sohegan and I feel like it's, it's given me my voice. I was a very anxious student starting off. I have anxiety, so public speaking is something that was kind of difficult for me. But Sohegan has really inspired me to advocate for my community. It's inspired me to make change. If I feel that change needs to be made, I can complain to the appropriate bodies if I feel like there's an issue in the community. And that's something that's unique to Sohegan, I think. We have a culture here where students are inspired to speak about issues that they feel are important and my senior project is really about the Sohegan culture as a whole, and I think community council is a perfect representation of that.
Thank you, Ralph. Yes, love your senior project. Yeah. Appreciate the passion.
Oh, I forgot to mention that we have elections coming up, sorry.
Yes, they just did nominations for moderator.
Yeah, we'll be voting for moderator on Monday, so.
Awesome. Great, thank you so much. Appreciate your, your input and willingness to come to all of our meetings. Because they can go late. So thank you. Committee updates. Is there anyone from prior? Nothing. I mean, we haven't done anything with communication in the past month, so there's nothing there. I think it'll be quick, move on. Okay. Grant program assurances.
Sure. So what you have in the packet is a copy of the federal grant program assurances. So as I wrote about in board notes, the Sohegan Cooperative School District participates in Title Funds, IDEA, Title II, ESSER, and we also accomplished a SAFE grant this year. So the New Hampshire ED, if you know, it used to be New Hampshire DOE, and now it's New Hampshire ED, serves as a pass-through agent for federal funds. And in order to participate in federal programs, we have to assure that we follow the federal guidelines that are there. This is equity, communication, notification. We do follow. It's the penalty of my credential. So and I've been doing this a little while. So when I first started, it was just the soup who had to sign. And then for a while, it was an actual item that enabled the board chair to sign. That was it for a few years. Now it's swung back to just the superintendent, but the statute says and requirements that we have to notice the board and make sure the board is aware of the assurances and that I will be signing. So I'm doing this now, even though it's for next year. Mike, I'll put my credential on it. No worries. I'll still, I'll sign this because we're going to send it now. But these are, this fulfills our requirement and so we will all be legal beagle and participate in federal projects.
Great. So if anyone had a chance to look through those and all the legal language in there or have any questions, or shall we give Mr. Chamberlain our blessing to go ahead and sign? Motion, motions by Mr. O'Keefe, second by Ms. Peters, any discussion?
It will be my honor to sign and participate. Happy to do it and it's good stuff. We do a good job, but it's, at one point, we had over eighty grants alive.
Yeah, there's, there's a lot of legal language in there. So the only question is that there's no concern that there's something we're not following that we need to implement or we are comfortable that we are following.
Yeah, otherwise I get in trouble. You guys don't.
I know there's a, I know.
So yes, no.
So no, we have a thorough policy.
We do a really good job. Katie, Amy, Christine, me. Last year, a lot more me when I was in that role, but no, we do a good job. We really do follow and we do assure and we implement the guidelines. We have Title One, open houses, we have communications. We're in good shape.
Okay, thank you. We will, do you need, do you need us to actually vote on to say and do that or?
No, the requirement is that I notice the board's.
You notice the board.
So to enable, said Steve told the board about it, they know, and then if we ever got audited, we would pull up this meeting in the minutes and they would say, yep, Steve did what he was supposed to do.
Okay, so, so we might as well.
You can.
A quick vote.
You are even better than that.
To tell Mr. Chamberlain that it is okay to sign the, the yeah, general assurances.
All good. Thank you.
Hold the favor.
We exceeded the requirement, which I love.
Thank you. The unassigned fund balance.
So I'll, I'll talk a little bit and then Amy will dig in however, what you want. So
Is enough.
Just a reminder, the vast majority of the budget process is on expenditures. And, and we talk a lot about what we spend money on. And then towards the end of the process, we talk about revenues. Because revenues and expenditures come together to form the tax rate. And so during that process, we estimate, and you heard it tonight from Matt about what was left over at F Y twenty-two. We estimate the amount of funds left over to fill the, the warrant articles, write for trusts and reduce the tax rate. And if there's money above that, there's an opportunity for the Sohegan Cooperative School Board to vote very, in full transparency, to do additional projects. So as of March thirty-first, and I really appreciate that Amy and Katie are digging in early to look at this because in my world, remember, anytime if you, if you return, like this year, we returned if you return a lot back and you, and you don't return the same amount the next year, then you are starting at a tax rate deficit, right? Because your revenue went down. And so the estimation is important and how the board handles that. So as of March thirty-first, nine hundred and fifty-three K is projected the undefined fund balance. About three forty was revenue and about six twelve is from expenditures. So that's a good piece. Just to your reminder that we committed two hundred and twenty thousand dollars to expendable trust. If you remember, we went through the contribution in, out, and Amy and Roger did a great job. And remember, we're trying to have, get what, no less than what, a hundred thousand per building, right? So very grateful that the community supported this endeavor because when we do take, you know, the skylights, remember, we ran into the problem with connecting them to the fire suppression system, but we're still working on that. Could be updated. But when we do, we will have enough money to support that project as well as keep the minimum. Seventy thousand revolving the recreational, it's the turf and the inception of the twenty-five thousand technology fund. I had a chance when I was writing this up this morning, and I apologize for the late spin, a little hectic, but the, I looked at the vote. Did you know the technology fund got the most votes? Isn't that interesting and significant? So people liked it. So I thought that was, and Brian Miller was really excited. We talked about that today, so he was excited. So we said we committed for the offset taxes and it's and Amy and I, we talk about our credibility and our work. What you don't want to do is, is project a tax rate that is higher than you promised the voters. Because then you lose credibility. So I appreciate all the work and credibility established by Katie and Amy and the work. So six hundred and fifty was committed offset taxes in public. That's what we said. We put our little names to it and all that fun stuff. And we're just about there and it's March thirty-first, so it's really good news. Amy's doing a great job. Katie's doing a great job monitoring it. And then as she does this longer, you get more used to, you know, when the encumbrances are getting forgiven or get released, I should say. And we're working on, we met as a leadership team and said, look, it's April vacation. Honestly, the vast majority of funds by now it's very appropriate that they're spent by April. We have seven weeks coming back. I'm not talking about food, you know, and stuff, but you probably won't be seeing too much like new textbooks, right, with seven weeks to go because they needed them. So we're getting there. But great work, Amy and Katie. And if you're going around, is a little bit deeper dive and Amy's happy to go through if you have any questions. But that's the overview and now we'll dig in a little bit more.
Yeah.
But we're in good shape.
Yeah, definitely. So yeah, so I just created a sheet and happy to answer questions and we'll bring this back, you know, each month through the end of the fifth.
Just a question for you. I know we don't call it catastrophic aid anymore. When do we typically get reimbursed for that? Is that already posted in these numbers or is that?
We did receive in December, I think, the amount that we would get. So that is called special education aid. So you'll see that's in the, the second revenue line item.
Thank you.
So that is included. There wasn't, there wasn't increase in what we were expecting. So that is reflected.
Very difficult to estimate that.
Yeah.
Because you, the state doesn't tell you the percent, so it's all, it's a finite pot.
Yeah.
So it's about the participation. And so they don't tell you the percentage and they don't, until the very end, it's, it's an awful, awful program.
And the Medicaid is a lot of work that our special education administrative systems do. They do a lot of work to try to recapture as much of that as possible. So shout out to Karen Bangberry and Autumn and Vanessa Lethner. Regina. She's do a lot of work on that, so. Everybody that we've done.
Remember, this is a default.
Right.
About, we're in default this year.
Yeah.
So it goes back to.
In that special, it's that funny one that's always hard to budget because you just don't know your actual population that's going to show up. Yeah. So. I mean, that's half the money. Yep.
Yeah.
So yeah, so looking at, you know, the expenditures, the regular ed that is due to hiring decisions, so we have more savings there. I've just had the special ed, that's tricky, that's somewhat offset by the student services line. Interscholastic, that's some savings in athletics and stipends. Other. Transportation, we had less buses this year. On technology, that was due primarily to the and let's see, the food service, that is accounting for the latest projection that we presented last month. So where we have as opposed to a twenty thousand dollar transfer, hopefully needing less than that about or a little under seventy thousand. So yeah, so we'll keep, you know, keep a close eye on this and do an updated version for you next month and then again in June. And if we do feel comfortable that there's some additional funds beyond what we've committed to offset the tax rate and to pay for the warrant articles, then we'll have some projects ready for the folks to consider. So we already do have a list. If we start to get close and it looks like there'll be some funds, we'll make sure that, you know, facilities or whatnot, that we go out and, and get appropriate number of bids and be able to commit those funds. So it's pretty tight right now. So at this moment, I would say no, but
I feel good.
Steve's more optimistic
I feel good.
Than the business office, so, but we are, we are preparing with projects. And if it looks close, we can talk about those next month. Okay.
But we met the, the most important thing is we met the tax rate obligation and funded that warrant articles. Everything else is great. I mean, but, but it's really, really good. Especially just, you know, I say that she's on like seven budgets because she's done defaults, but but you really are really fine tuning, really very high functioning in your office to get this close on the estimate.
Yeah.
It's holy guacamole. What a great job. No, it's legit. I've been doing this a long time.
You're here.
To get to that close on the estimate, because that's, that's what you want. You're doing what you said you were going to do. Nothing wrong with that in this business.
Yeah. No, thank you. Anyone have a question?
Yeah, just a, I have a question or truly a, maybe a clarification to remind everyone about this stuff. The, the special or the warrant, not special, the warrant or the surplus warrant articles that pass can be funded for the revenue.
They can.
They can.
Yeah.
But special projects at the end of the year cannot.
Correct.
Right. And so just us taking those numbers as the example. It is, so will the will the surplus warrants be funded in the first instance out of revenue? Or sorry, yeah, out of the revenue where they can go from and leaving the, or the expenditures line sort of as neutral as it can be so that if there is a significant project that needs to be done.
Yeah.
That we have more funds to be able to have a conversation about. That we have more funds to be able to have a conversation about that.
And i- if there's enough in the expenditures, well, there is enough in the expenditures.
Well, I'm just saying that there's three hundred and four.
Revenue line.
Three hundred and forty thousand and the revenue should cover all of our warrants.
To cover all the warrant.
Right.
Yeah.
A winner winner chicken dinner.
So.
Because on July one, that those revenues, that revenue funds flip over and those are available for the warrant.
Right. So I guess to the extent we can.
Yeah.
Do it that way.
I'm picking up or putting down.
You got that? You with me on that?
I'm picking up or putting down.
Doesn't mean we'll use all the what's available. Let's just be realistic about it, but. Um.
Flexibility.
Things.
Flexibility and choice. Yes.
I can get what you're putting down.
All right.
Yeah.
Perfect. Thanks. Thanks, Amy.
Yeah. Anyone else? Nope. Okay. Thank you very much for your work. It is, it, yeah, it's it's impressive. And thank you for keeping track of everything so tightly. It's.
I have a great staff.
Yes, you do. Yes, you do. It's they're they're awesome. Um. What's next? Oh, policy. Anna, would you like to update us on everything?
So I can do this kind of quickly because I gave you, I tried to put together a little summary, but as you all know, when we did the review of the policies these years, this year, there was a bunch of G policies that. Maybe were redundant with other policies, conflicted with other policies. The so these are the ones that. Um, we met with PPC on, got their feedback on. And I kind of, I tried to put everything in like this is what it is. This is why we're doing this. I'm going to point out. An error in the very first one. Great way to start. Right now. But BHC GBD. Actually was passed. In November of twenty twenty-two somehow, but is just BHC. When we read it, the GBD. Had not yet. We hadn't talked to PPC yet. So it's kind of, I mean, it 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 actually has been passed. I was wrong about that. But PPC had looked, we looked at the old GBD and it had this line in it about staff members are reminded that board actions, the board meetings. Are public meetings and provide an excellent opportunity to observe the board's deliberation, should say on on problems of staff concern. So what PPC had recommended is that we take that language from the old. GBD and move it into what is now GBD BHC. Um, just so that there was a reminder. Um, Stephen emailed me and pointed out that I had written in instead of on, so that should be on. That, of course, got me thinking more. And I think we ought to say. Opportunity to observe the board's deliberation on issues of staff interest. Because I think that covers everything. I mean, they might, you know, I I hope they're coming on positive things too, not just if they think there's a problem. So. I would like to make a motion that I'm going to before we vote on these amend GBB slash BHC. To say. Board deliberations on issues of staff interest. And I'm hoping someone will second that.
I'll second.
Okay. Other than that, um, were there any questions on anything else? I, as I said, I tried to point out like this is the policy we had. This is where we are now. I'm happy to answer questions. I don't know that you all need me to just reiterate what I typed up though, so.
Yeah, I love what you did.
Um, yeah. Um, I owed it to you at least a meeting ago, so I. I'm glad I finally got it pulled together. I apologize for that.
Let's um, let's do a quick vote on the motion that you just made and it was, you know, that's seconded. So we can include it in anything that we approve tonight.
Then we could do it almost like a consent agenda. I've got the edits. I can send the word version to Abby.
Okay, um, so just quickly, any comments on the motion made on BHC GBD? All right, those in favor of the amendment. All right, that's everybody non-post. Okay, so now when we, we can say we have made it. We can approve. Um, so I, yeah, so any question? GBCE?
Um, hold on. Are you just gonna, we're gonna roll through them or?
I was gonna roll through them.
All I have is a comment on this one specifically.
Yes.
I think it's the only one, which is, which is really, I mean. Really comes to a question about what our board goals are going to be. I know that's not on our agenda. I expect to see it in May. But um. We've this, Sohegan Board has had a history of communicating with teachers on a regular basis. That went away in recent years. Um, effort was made. Um, by myself and Stephanie uh two years ago. To get something, some connective tissue between board members and faculty. And it reserves in two years that I think there's been one. Lunch or one breakfast served. It's not good enough. I mean, I'd like to see something. Something, I mean, there's been these presentations which have been excellent, by the way. But that's not the roots of where of the community component to um have a conversation, informal conversation with faculty. And this proposal. Um.
Wait.
Uh, this policy really sets a boundary condition.
GBD, the one that we.
GBD BHC.
Did. I'm like the sexual harassment training? I was so confused. I'm sorry.
Then, yeah, no, it's the GBD BHC.
Got it, got it, got it.
I mean, the board desires to maintain open channels of communication between itself and the staff. That is true. Um, for which, which for purposes of this policy means all individuals who report to the superintendent directly or indirectly. The basic line of communication will however be through the superintendent, which that makes sense for some things. You don't want. This the cats of the board going all spreading around, I suppose, and causing chaos. I you get that there's, but there's gotta be a way. It can't be zero. And it's been really difficult to to. Get administrative buy-in on that need. And I'm not here to offer a particular solution, but this policy really speaks to that. So when we're talking about our board goals, I'd like us to think about how we can. Work with the administration to figure out a path forward so that board members who would like to have have inquiries with staff can do that without a bunch of red tape. No, it's no stated for the record.
Do you have comments? Um. So we'll keep them on when we form four goals.
Wait.
Great.
I just, and I think it's maybe a discussion of. Of wording or aspirations or things like this, because I do think there's a difference between. Official communications, which none of us are able to do on our own.
Right.
And and so if the intent is that, look, if this is official communication, there has to be a way that those get conveyed. If I stop and talk to a teacher, that's not, I'm not acting on behalf of the board. Um, so, you know, I'm happy to talk about, you know, ways there can be encouragement or certainly this isn't, I don't think it's intended as. You can't have communications. Um, but.
Yeah.
I I hear.
And we'll talk about a staff breakfast coming up.
Yep, I think that'd be great.
We'll bring up later. I didn't want to interrupt the policy piece. Um, okay. So I just want to run down the road with GBCE. Any comments or questions? GB EBC? I don't guess. Stop. Okay, GCI, I don't, do I need to list all these or does anyone have questions on any specific one? Maybe we'll do that.
There you go.
So I'm not sitting here going through everyone.
And I think we could just, if there's no questions or after the questions are answered, just move to. Adopt the proposed language.
And because there's some about rescinding.
Right.
So that's the one thing I want to be careful of.
Though the proposal includes rescind. So if we, if the motion is to adopt the proposals set out in my memo on page one fifty-eight.
That will work.
That will work.
Okay, I was like, oh, I do. Um. So any questions on one through nine? Nothing? Okay, Anna, you want to make that motion?
Uh.
To officially make the motion?
I would move that we adopt the proposals with number one being amended as per the last amendment. Is set out in my memo on page. One fifty-eight of one sixty-six in the agenda. Um, in their entirety.
Second.
Second. I, and any discussion? I would kind of. No discussion? Okay, those in favor of the motion? Raise your hand. Any opposed? Any abstentions? That passes. Cool. Okay, thank you.
Thanks for putting that together.
Yes, thank you for your work. Um. One thing I want to do, which is came up, I I approached. Mike and I asked if, you know, there's the staff. Um, appreciation week in the beginning of May. And I kind of volunteered us for serving breakfast again, like we did last year where we had bagels and fruit and things like that. I don't have an actual day which day Anna wants us to do it yet. I'll get in touch with her. But it's like before school.
Out Monday.
Wednesday again? Okay.
Eighty-one, Monday.
We'll do.
Before Tuesday final, Thursday.
Okay. Tuesday or Wednesday. I'll I'll get in communication with everyone if we can just donate some fruit, bagels, cream cheese, that sort of thing. And then we can. We can hang out and have a meeting with them, you know. We can sit down, talk with them a little bit, say hi in the morning. And again, it'll be at probably what? Seven thirty, seven? Yeah, seven, seven thirty in the morning. So.
I'll be late.
Tuesday or Wednesday, the first week of May. Okay.
Actually, the second week.
Oh, the second week?
If you get back, I'll make first break and it's not that week.
Night, eight, eight.
Yeah, so you're looking at the nine.
Okay.
Yeah, it could be like a late.
Oh, that might be nice.
That's a, that'd be a later start.
So, all right, that's even better. If it's a Tuesday.
We're coordinating a little bit more.
May ninth, is that what it said?
Yeah, Tuesday or Wednesday.
Likely Tuesday.
But.
How early?
Uh.
If if it's Tuesday, it could be the late start. If it's Wednesday, it's gonna be seven or seven thirty in the morning.
Once we get for early. Just Tuesday, I've got some stuff later, but that's fine. I mean, if I can't go, that's all right. I'll I'll deliver food and then head to work.
Okay. So that that'll be a a nice chance to visit with our staff. And say hello and thank you. Okay, um. Did you, do we want to do nominations, resignation stuff in um public?
Uh, we can start a little process of the for the community and then we'll go non-public for specific.
Because we'll do, do you want, should we do public input right now before we do that?
We can, we can keep going.
Okay. Okay, why don't you do your thing?
Um, so, so actually, in 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 addition, we have, because the budget passed, which was a wonderful thing. And as you all remember, there were two positions in the proposed budget that weren't included in the default. Do you remember that we had to hold those nominations until we had, because we were two weeks later? You picking up what I'm putting down?
Yep.
Mm-hmm.
So I'm very pleased that Amanda Maniscalco, Amanda Heiburger will be our in the nomination and look before the April fifteenth, which I'm very happy about. That statute, so that's a good thing. And um then we also um this month, we are uh nominating administrators. Um, whose contracts would, you know, would become conclude this year. So the administration, who contract is up, we're nominating for just new contracts. Um, just a little bit of piece about um, there is a, there is a similar um evaluation process um for administrators. Mike and I talk about it. I get to. Last year, I get to see him in action a lot. This year, some. Um, but one thing that is uh maybe interesting that the one eighty-nine uh fourteen. Uh, A, um, building administrators are on the same statute, same consideration as teachers. So. Um, after three or five years, as we talked about, remember, we talked about continuing contract three years for someone who's had continuing contract before. Five years for someone who is new. Um, so they also are eligible for continuing contract. And so those are obviously important decisions for administrators too. Um, that's interesting and and representative value, we may have a discussion about this over the summer. The statute. Um, calls out assistant principals and principal. It doesn't calls uh call out dean of faculty and students.
Right.
And it's actually some varying degree of, uh, is it because it's a job alike? Is it covered by the statute or not? Um, I don't know if there's been a legal test. Um, but I have interest of, I have interest in working with legislature to carve out dean of students and dean of faculty. Um, to make it more efficient. So someone doesn't have to spend lots of money for the test because I think the intent is. And the dean of students and dean of faculty positions, I think. Now are more of those titles, and Mike and I talked about that. I think they're more prevalent now than they were like ten years ago. But that's something to consider. But uh most of the the people that I talked to, that they would be considered the same. And but it's, there's some ambiguity there because that title's not listed. So it's just an interesting thing. Um. But with the volume, we'll talk specifically about um the nomination and contract proposals in non-public.
Great, thank you. Um, one thing I know I wanted to kind of add, and we had talked about the SAU meeting before about adding like a line about just. Items for discussion like might go on a future.
Oh, yeah.
Agenda.
Yep, yep.
So I wanted to throw that out there. Is there something that we want to look at adding to a future agenda that we feel is important? I think we'll add this each month as a line item.
Did I, again, did I lose this?
I think we've all kind of forgot, but I I'd like.
Kind of an old business section on the agenda.
Yeah, or or new business, like is there something we want to put on future agenda? So is there anything that someone's seeing as we starting a a new year for us?
No, old business and a new business section on.
Yes. Yes. Is there anything for discussion?
I have one.
Whoever.
Um. It's not a new idea, but um it's one that hasn't been. Evaluated with any seriousness. Which is the notion of bringing seventh and eighth grade into the cooperative. And into the annex. Um, I won't go all of into it, but there's a lot of compelling reasons as far as I look at it for uh goodness for students. Um, to be able to put the full weight and power of the resources of the cooperative behind them. Including Mont Vernon students who currently have no representation. Um, especially given what happened in Mont Vernon, their funding of their exploratory commission. I haven't talked to the Mont Vernon School Board members yet, but um. Um, they're clearly concerned and is their community. Um, it's just a responsible thing to do. Opens up some space throughout the SAU. We know we have very expensive uh uh proposals out that have not been satisfactory to the community. Um, so there's some work, some things there and it's just good governance. Um, if we were to have. Uh. Uh. Two more grades in our cooperative, that would, that would balance the decision-making authority at the SAU board level. It would provide representation, um civic representation for all students at all grade levels. Um. And it's something that has never been seriously considered. So I'm going to say the same thing at the SAU board level. I'm going to um. Uh, try to persuade that the Jfac uh. Uh, operating uh purpose is to see what it would take to do that. Um, I have a sort of a challenge with them. I I I tend from the preliminary information I've seen, um, looks like you could do it without putting a shovel in the ground. Uh, maybe that's a moonshot. Maybe that's, maybe there's information that I I don't have at my disposal yet, have no committee has been able to review yet. So I look forward to receiving the information and refining that. Process because if that's a viable solution, um, could be good for students, be good for our our tax base, and it could be good for our governance structure.
All right, we'll look, we'll look forward to putting that onto a. An agenda for discussion.
Please, yes. I I think we maybe we should all weigh in on it at some point, you know, a time is of the essence. Um, the goal would be to get it done. This cycle and have a question put to the tax, to the voters um next voting season.
All right, anyone else have something?
I, I was just gonna say that, I mean, obviously, it's uh, this is an issue. That involves more than this board. And for the very most, actually, I mean, I guess. Not saying we should do this, but I guess theoretically. You could add someone to the cooperative without involving AMS, but. I don't see how that would work functionally because the big thing is going to be what is Mount, Mont Vernon want to do? What are they willing to do? And so I think there does have to be a a discussion. I mean, it's a two-pronged discussion. Is it feasible? Um. But then, you know, it's not just a, you know, build it and they will come thing. Just because we say it's feasible doesn't mean that's going to work for the others. So it's a. It is definitely, I agree, I agree that it's a discussion that should be had. I guess my point is, is that although it. Does definitely involve this board, it is a bigger discussion than just this board.
Most certainly, certainly. It's.
Yeah.
It's probably a compelling reason for Mont Vernon to join a joint committee to 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 dig into the weeds and figure out how to do this, what it would take to do this. Um, so yes, it it. It's the Sohegan culture to to take input from all the stakeholders. So I I think it's perfectly appropriate and desirable to. Um, to include everyone who's willing to engage. Yeah.
Okay, all right, we'll throw that on.
Thank you.
Discussion.
Perfect.
Um. Resignations is something.
Yeah, so we received um two resignations actually from the World Language Department. Yeah, so we received um two resignations actually from the World Language Department, Michelle Castell and Lisa. Chris Schopper submitted their uh resignations, uh, unique opportunities for both of them. And uh, so uh, I want to make a motion to accept the resignation with regret and appreciation. That would be wonderful. We will, Mike and I will commit.
All right. Motion. Have a second?
Second.
Second for Ms. Peters. And we are sorry to hear that they're leaving, but I, you know. Give them all our best for their future endeavors. Um, those in favor of accepting the resignations? And opposed? That's. Doubles. Um, and we're gonna go into non-public. Uh, we have various things to talk about. Uh, we will be planning on a meeting. Are we talking Tuesday or Thursday? We're talking Thursday now.
Yeah, um, especially so, um.
I'm gonna give a quick.
Sure.
Just.
And we can talk about it, but um the data collection is fine. The principal search, as I wrote about in board notes, completed yesterday. Um, so Mike and I, and we'll disseminate and synthesize all that information and be ready to make a, a nomination next week. Um, either way, uh, Tuesday is a S A U board. If, if sometimes we've done meetings before, but I understand if that doesn't work and Thursday is open.
Yeah, because Tuesday would have to be like at five and I, that'd be right up against the S A U meeting. So. I know we have people who work and people, I don't know if you're in session. Yeah, you are. Okay.
So if Thursday, if Thursday works, that's great for us. Tuesday and Thursday or Thursday doesn't work. I, it depends on what time we get out. That's fine, but.
So what would be the problem with holding it right after the S A U meeting?
Oh, afterwards?
Could it be late?
Oh, hmm. Anything about the app?
Why we're not having you out two nights next?
What's?
No, it's fine.
How late does that meeting?
Yeah, I don't think I've been.
Not a lot on that.
Yeah, there's not a lot. So I think that's a, that's a win, that could be winner winner chicken dinner. Um, we will, we will also have um, may perhaps have some um. Teacher nominations as well um for next year, next year nominations. Mike is uh, and his team is, is moving forward. I've got, I'm gonna have a few interviews. So if, um. Yeah, we can post Tuesday.
Prefer Tuesday after the S A U?
Yeah, whatever you prefer. I'm over there.
I do. Tuesday after? Sunny, any questions about that one? Yeah.
Great.
Make sure you.
Bunny day.
Here, right?
Yeah.
Tuesday after.
Funny day. Excellent. Love it.
Then we don't have to come back another day. And neither do you.
That's all right. That's all right. It's great.
Um, all right, so uh, public input. There's nobody here.
And we do have some Zoomers.
Anyone on Zoom besides Mr. Vyu who's sitting here? If you are interested in a public comment, please raise your hand. Um, and we will promote you to panelist and. See if you're interested. And I see no hands going up.
See.
I think we're good.
I think we're good too.
I think we're good. All right. Thank you.
I'll make a motion to enter non-public.
And RSA ninety one A colon three two C.
I think it's A and C. I did A and C, yeah.
A and C. And that's a real call vote, so.
Our second?
Second, I, I did a second.
Okay.
Um. Let's do a real call vote because we can still go into it without him because we'll have a majority.
I think John did. Okay.
Vyu, yes.
You did yes.
Grand yes. Sunny, yes. You can say.
You're my favorite right now. You're my favorite right now, just so you know.
Billy Zimmerman, yes.
All right, we shall go.
Eight fifteen.
Yes.